Okay, well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular board meeting for San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November 19, 2013. Will you now please join me in a pledge of allegiance? Roll call, Madam.
Supervisor Pine.
I should say, Madam Clerk of the Board.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier. President Horsley.
Here. Now time for a public comment, and I have three slips here. First is Martin Fox, followed by Roger Medler, and then followed by Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the Board, and my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county and pledging your allegiance to our republic, which stands for liberty and justice for all, even those persons living with mental illness who not believe they are sick and cannot advocate for services that would give them an opportunity to be productive citizens. Persons living with serious mental illness who do not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily are imprisoned in a cycle of incarceration in hospitals and jails as a result of the intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures that are said to be justified by tortured interpretations of the Lantern and Petrus Short Act. What might otherwise be plausible deniability of the benefits that Laura's Law provides to persons living with mental illness in real life translates into a willful ignorance that reveals an intent to aid and abet assaults on women, children, the elderly, and those least able to defend themselves, as the stabbing of John Jacob Berger's mother in San Mateo on August 12th, the molestation of three children in San Carlos on October 3rd, and the assault of a county nurse and security guard in San Mateo on October 13th show. The implementation of Laura's Law in communities that have experienced greater tragedies is no longer controversial. That is why a recommendation that the Alameda County Board of Supervisors implement Laura's Law is on the Berkeley City Council's consent agenda this evening. Please start promoting true recovery and ignore the wishful thinking and happy talk used to perpetuate repeated relapses for people like Daniel Brickman. Free persons living with mental illness who are so sick they cannot seek treatment voluntarily from the cycle of incarceration so they can lead productive lives safely by voting to implement Laura's Law. Thank you.
Roger Medler, followed by Teresa Dyer, and then Karen Francone.
Yes, good morning. I'm Roger Medler. Anyway, I was, I've been, I live in Pacifica, California, and I would like to request a public records for a business that is in Pacifica that I cannot get the docu, proof of legal business. I have gone to every procedure I can to get the proof, and nobody will give it to me. I've been told that the business is, has no permits, and I'd like to see the legal proof of it. And I've been to Kevin Mullins, and I've been told not to contact them anymore. Don't come in my office. I called a place in Sacramento. She says, you know, there's nothing they can do about it, and they just don't know what to do, and it just goes on and on. I would like to see legal documentation of the business. And next time, I'd be a little more prepared for the meeting, but, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medler. Perhaps Chris Hunter might, it's a Pacifica resident, he might ask what that business is, Chris. Go ahead, Teresa Dyer.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Dyer, and let me give you a little background. I've been a senior peer counselor. I've been on the grand jury. I've been a prison minister. I've been with battered women, and so I know a little bit how our county is run. However, I'm very disappointed because it is the most corrupt and immoral county and should be investigated by the federal government. And number one, this is a story about two senior citizens and how their paths crossed. For one, I was a victim of this in your court system, and she was a victim of the Adult Protective Services. Now, we're going to go back to the Adult Protective Services because that's the most current one, where I contacted Andrea and Tissier, who was investigating the case about an embezzlement regarding the Wong case. And that was a year and a half ago, and I feel that that was uncalled for because under public records, you should be really responding within 14 days. However, I understand that you gave it to the county council, but it had no date, no signature, and no letterhead stationery. I have since received a copy of that. But I want the original date, Ms. Tissier, that you requested it from public council, okay? And referring to this ordinance that you implemented back in 2008, I got a response from the county council, and the one statement is false. It says, "In response to your first request, the Board of Supervisors has not appointed a panel since passage of San Mateo County Ordinance 2.04, 0.030." I beg your pardon, because I have the newspaper clipping where some of the people were appointed, but obviously, it was never used. One was Mr. Malpe.
Your time is up now.
Okay, Mike Arvey, and several others. So that's a false statement.
Karen Francone.
Good morning, Supervisors, President, County Managers, and City Council. I wanted to come this morning to thank you very much, and I'm going to just go ahead and read my letter so I don't leave anything out. On behalf of the Service League of San Mateo County, I want to take this opportunity to personally thank you, the Board of Supervisors, as well as the member of your Community Corrections Partnership for approaching the challenge of public safety realignment as an opportunity to undertake strategic choices that will improve the outcomes of the incarcerated. Your Board and the CCP elected to set aside $1 million to support community-based options to improve job placement and housing for the realigned populations. As you already know, the Service League received a generous award toward the purchase of a transitional housing for offenders with no family connections in our community. Homeless offenders are among the most vulnerable to re-offend. I am pleased to announce that the Service League has secured all the necessary funds to purchase an appropriate facility. You are cordially invited to attend the dedication of this new transitional housing facility on Tuesday, December 3, 2013. Most of you have probably gotten an invitation. If you haven't, please give me a call. I'll give you the information. And no better fitting name for the facility will be dedicated to the honor and the loving memory of our colleague and friend, Michael D. Nevin, whose heart was always with those most in need. Speaking as a community-based provider in San Mateo County, I greatly appreciate your Board's forward thinking and commitment to partner in meaningful ways with us and other community-based providers. Again, on behalf of the Service League of San Mateo County, congratulations to all of you for funding the Public Safety Realignment Innovation Fund to foster new strategies and partnerships among public safety, community-based providers. These funds have already contributed to important housing and job training and placement successes in San Mateo County. Proudly, we believe Mike's house will stand out as an outstanding example of the successful partnership. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. I know it's, for all of us, he was a very much loved colleague, and it's really always tough to talk about Mike and that we lost him too soon. But any case, that concludes public comment. I just also want to introduce Mike Callagie, who's the former Deputy Chief of San Mateo Police Department. He's now come to San Mateo County in the County Manager's Office, and he'll be focused on criminal justice, and want to welcome him. By the way, he's also a Sarah graduate and graduated from Notre Dame. That is the Notre Dame in Belmont, so welcome to our county and welcome. I think you're going to be a real vital asset to us in the future. So now it's time to set the agenda and to approve consent agenda items. Are there any items to remove from consent? Supervisor.
Yeah, excuse me. I'm sorry. Mr. President, I'd like to pull item number 15. Just have a couple of questions.
Any other items to remove?
With that, I'll go ahead and move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items with item number 15 being pulled.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number one is, actually was a presentation by State Assembly Member Rich Gordon, giving us updates on state legislation and perhaps some feedback from us on what we would like to see in state legislation, but unfortunately, he's not able to make it, but he does indicate that he will attend our next meeting. Second presentation is the presentation of the Fatherhood Collaborative Report. Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you, President Horsley. It's my pleasure to introduce Patrick Ledesma and Corinne Verdisco, who represent the leadership of the Fatherhood Collaborative. I serve as the Board's liaison to the collaborative. We were just coming off a very successful breakfast a few weeks ago, and I'm very impressed with the, the energy enthusiasm that have been, has been injected into the collaborative through both Patrick's and Corinne's efforts, so look forward to your presentation.
Well, thank you for those kind words, Supervisor Pine. Good morning, President Horsley, and Supervisor Slocum, Tissier, and Groom. Good morning, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Byers. I'm, I'm the Chair of the Fatherhood Collaborative, Pat Ledesma, and this morning, I'm pleased to share with you today some information about the collaborative and how, what we're working on, and the agencies and organizations that support the roles of dads in the lives of children and their families, and therefore improving the lives of childrens and families and strengthening the community. Just a quick note, whenever we mention fathers, it's a more inclusive term in this presentation to include stepfathers, grandfathers, male role models. It's basically anyone that can impact the life of a child and their family. So basically, we've looked at some studies that have indicated that male involvement is critical during the early years of a child's life and their development, and has had an impact on a child's future success and well-being. As an advocacy group for the county, we are collectively working with others to carry out our mission, which is to provide a forum to address and support the importance of men and fathers taking an active role in the, in the well-being of children and families. We aim to educate, engage, and inspire. Art, oh, you want me to, I thought I did click that. My apologies. So our goals are to increase awareness and support of the importance of fathers, to change outdated perceptions about fatherhood, to attract and involve organizations and individuals, develop new father-engaging programs through partnerships and collaborations with other organizations and county departments, and encourage fathers, male caregivers, and families to actively participate, connect, and advocate with others to increase father involvement in the lives of children and families. So through an active presence and a regular positive interactions with the father and a child, a child's chances for successful outcomes are greatly increased. Our Board aims to advocate for and support father involvement as it relates to specific educational and social outcomes, such as early literacy, which in turn will minimize negative behaviors and overall demand for county services. By educating, engaging, and inspiring others to openly talk about fatherhood issues and the importance of what fatherhood means in today's society, we believe children will be empowered with the tools to succeed and have an overall better quality of life as an adult. So the Fatherhood Collaborative has evolved over time. We have pioneered the movement towards a father-friendly culture since our inception in 1998. In 2006, we developed a needs assessment of the Fatherhood Collaborative of San Mateo County, which was funded by First Five of San Mateo County and was largely worked on by the health system, particularly Dr. Anon Chabro was involved with that study. One of the top needs was around the support of fathers and the availability of father-child activities. In 2007, the Board of Supervisors graciously adopted the Fatherhood Collaborative as an, as an official county advisory board, and which increased our credibility. Today, I'm excited to announce that we have a new Board, a new Executive Director, a new look, and an innovative way of doing, innovative way of doing business by providing advocacy and support for fathers through partnerships and collaboration. The Fatherhood Collaborative Board is comprised of various representatives from county departments, community-based organizations, and members at large. Our Board liaison is Supervisor Pine, and our staff position and program administration is housed under the Human Services Agency. Since December of last year, we've had many changes to our, to our Board and our structure, including the appointment of a new Chair. Eight of our current Board members are new. That's over 50% of our Board, and we've had three current vacancies, and as I mentioned earlier, we've had a new Executive Director. This is by far the strongest combination of Board members I have witnessed since 2006. We're very excited about the talents of our new Executive Director, and Corinne has brought so much to the Board in terms of innovation, creativity, and organization. As she continues our presentation to you, I will say with confidence that her legacy will be remembered for, for driving our Board to new achievements. And with that, I'd like to introduce Corinne to finish the presentation. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the forward slide.
It's okay.
Thank you, Patrick. Good morning. I am pleased to serve as the Executive Director for the Fatherhood Collaborative. Today, or this morning, I look forward to sharing with you how we are working to educate, engage, and inspire around fatherhood-related matters in San Mateo County. The Fatherhood Collaborative is designed to work collectively with county departments, community service, community-based organizations, private businesses, and individuals as advocates for father involvement and to support and enhance community services, championing the perspective that dads do matter. We support San Mateo County's Shared Vision 2025 through our partnerships with county departments. Our programs are designed to integrate with county services and provide opportunities for increased education, health, and the general well-being of our community. The Fatherhood Collaborative does not duplicate direct service delivery, but we bring an innovative way of impacting San Mateo County fathers, children, and families through our non-traditional partnerships and collaborations. The general mission of providing support, tools, and resources to fathers so that they can become more involved and be responsible parents is becoming a nationwide focus. The federal government is, has committed to financially supporting responsible fatherhood programs. Counties across the nation are implementing programs for fathers and encouraging dads to have an active and nurturing role in their children's lives. We deliver free father-child engagement opportunities throughout, through our programming. In collaboration with the San Mateo County Library and through their partnership with the Peninsula Library System, Dad &amp; Me and the Library offers monthly, year-round puppet show events at the 19 county and municipal library locations. This event encourages father participation and also encourages or emphasizes the importance of reading regularly to your children. Dad &amp; Me at the Park is an annual outdoor barbecue, resource, and activity fair that engages hundreds of fathers, childrens, and family, families. We are joined by local businesses and community partners for a fun day with a focus on bonding while emphasizing physical activity, literacy, and health. We also honor the hard work of three fathers or role models through our Fatherhood Awards. And through local partnerships with nonprofit and private organizations, Dad &amp; Me at the Pool offers childrens, children with their fathers an opportunity to learn the fundamentals of water safety while bonding and staying active at the pool. Every other year, we host an educational conference to highlight current happenings as they relate to fatherhood, with subject matter experts sharing their knowledge and experiences. Our past conference in 2011 was about the impact of incarceration on families. And lastly, as part of our core programming, we have the Dad's Count Breakfast, which aims to publicly recognize the importance of men as fathers, honor father-friendly businesses, and gain support from local organizations and around father-focused activities. So looking at our numbers over approximately a one-year span, we've had about two, or over 2,600 people that attended our program offerings. Dad &amp; Me at the Library saw over 1,700 attendees, and we have about a two-to-one ratio of children to fathers. Over 60% of the adults in attendance at the library events were men, and we expect these numbers to rise for the next fiscal year. On average, 20% more men attend this library program offering in comparison to any other children's programming offered in our public library locations. Dad &amp; Me at the Park had over 700 people in attendance. A follow-up survey determined that approximately 90% of adult attendees were dads. And from those same survey responses, 78% of adults who visited the resource booth walked away with new or helpful information. The Dad's Count Breakfast held this past October brought increased visibility to the importance of fatherhood involvement. We had a 195% increase in total revenue when we compared it to last year's breakfast event, and we engaged many new partners. We're currently in discussions with these partners about ways that we can collaborate to bring father-engaging program to the community. We have implemented new marketing strategies to widen our reach in the community and engage stakeholders. Part of our new strategy included rebranding, updating our webpage, reviving our newsletter, and a new brochure. We are also utilizing social media through Facebook to actively engage the community and share information with real-time results. Since May 2013, we have increased our Facebook connections by over 250%, and this number continues to rise. Some of our Facebook posts have reached upwards of 7,000 people. We are strategically moving forward as we continue to educate, educate, engage, and inspire in our community. We want to focus on embedding program and messaging within county departments and community agencies to leverage existing programs and services. When there is an opportunity, we will advocate for policy change to enhance the family model. We are reviewing our current board structure and bylaws to develop non-traditional partnerships, such as with law enforcement. We are thankful for the County Manager's continued recognition and the importance of fatherhood and support of our program. We are thinking long-term about planning and sustainability. As there has been, there will continue to be challenges along the way. Some of these challenges include the perceptions about a father's role and the various stereotypes when it comes to a father as the primary breadwinner versus a nurturer. Some of these stereotypes may be social, others cultural, but we are working through our education, outreach, and advocacy to change these perceptions. And a clear challenge for us is also fundraising, which we'll talk about new ways that we're looking to fundraise through our development of partnerships and maximizing our collaborations to achieve sustainability. We are planning for future programming in the areas of early literacy, physical activity, healthy lifestyle, science, and more through existing or new sponsorships. Through a partnership with La Petite Berlin, in 2014, we will implement the expanded Dad &amp; Me at the Pool series to feature monthly year-round dates in Half Moon Bay, San Bruno, Atherton, on the Redwood City border. We are also looking to add a site, hopefully in the summer months, in East Palo Alto or East Menlo Park. Partnerships we are currently cultivating include Electronic Arts, the Kinship Support Network, Indivision Shelter Network, UC Berkeley Extension Nutrition Program, The Home Depot, along with many others. So fundraising, I mentioned, is always a challenge, but we have new activities and creative ways to fundraise while still maintaining our ability to engage, educate, engage, and inspire the community. We are planning a Father's Day Weekend 5K Race, exploring online auctions with charitybuzz.com. We receive commissions from purchases at amazon.com through their affiliates program. And we've been partnering with local businesses to host fundraiser events. This is a photo of our past event last Thursday at Pasta Pomodoro. We're also been added to the charitable contributions campaign packet, so that's something new for this year, and we're looking at enhancing in-kind donations, which includes intern or volunteer time for our events and programming. And again, we do look forward to and are thankful for the continued support from the county. And before we close, I'd like to share with you a film that we recently produced. Some of you may have seen it, but others not, that highlights fatherhood in San Mateo County and just a few of our partners that we work with.
I do remember a couple birthdays wishing, blowing out the candles, and wishing to have a dad. I would see my friends with their fathers, and I would be a little bit jealous, and I would wonder, why don't I have a dad? I was planning on trying to find him. And then I kind of chickened out a little bit. I have his nose, but I have a couple pictures, but you know, just, just I have never seen him, you know? I have the memories, but I was three.
Well, one day, at circle time, I happened to come in, and the kids were talking about their daddies. And they went around the room, and when it got to this one girl, she excitedly said, "My daddy's in Mexico." Well, I have to say that it was kind of heartbreaking for me to hear that, as it was with our supervisor, because we knew that her daddy was not in Mexico, that her daddy was in jail. And this is the story that the mother had to tell, so the child wouldn't be upset by this. And that's one story out of many. There's so many other challenges with the kids in there.
Fatherhood Collaborative was started in 1998, and Jerry Hill was at the center of that effort as one of our Board of Supervisors. He recognized the need to increase the visibility for fathers and fatherhood matters. Basically, what happened is, is the Fatherhood Collaborative is set up as an advocacy organization to bring together many departments within the county that serve families and also community-based organizations throughout the county to bring awareness to fatherhood issues and to include them in the discussion about family matters. The Fatherhood Collaborative is greatly indebted to Senator Hill.
The Fatherhood Collaborative is effectively engaging the community and fathers. This year, 700 people attended our Dad &amp; Me at the Park event. We had fathers that were climbing up on the rock wall with their children, playing tug-of-war, kicking the ball around with soccer shots. We would love to hear from you if there's an opportunity to bring a father-engaging event to your community.
My job specifically as a facilities coordinator is to make sure that families are here, they're safe, they're kind of following the rules of our program, but really to provide them, you know, with a safe atmosphere for their family. I'm also the volunteer coordinator, so we get a ton of support from volunteers throughout the community and help from everything, anything from reading books to kids, to help painting, and that sort of stuff. We give them a safe environment here. We want them to thrive. We want them to get ready for kindergarten. We want them to learn how to socialize, but part of it is providing this acceptance, this love, this family atmosphere. And for me in particular, I get to play the role of a father figure for some of these kids, and it's a role that I'm happy to play. So what I try to do is to give them a little gift, and that gift is to get down to their level, to really listen to them, look them in the eyes, listen to their stories about their painted nails or their friends, their boo-boos, and just pay attention. And in that way, I'm giving them love, and, and they walk away happy.
I know you've done a good job by just keeping another human being by your side and keeping them happy.
The father is just like cuddling and kissing. I think so further, both of them are, you know, completing each other to have a safe environment to the baby.
Seeing her smile. Every time you look at her, the time you have an expression towards her, she just smiles. That's like the most rewarding thing you can get.
Parents is amazing and enjoying the time, like you pass the time with your kid. And it just, just like worth the life.
It's great to be a father.
It's good.
And now I close with a special thank you to our County Manager, our Board of Supervisors, Senator Hill, the Superior Court, all the community partners, and most importantly, to all the volunteers and individuals from our community that believe in the work of the collaborative and believe in the importance of fathers. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Corinne, I was sorry to see you leave the Hope Project, but this clearly fits you a lot better. I just want to say, as a, as a former person who spent a lot of years in law enforcement, one of the things that I just knew is that when we've had kids who were involved in gangs, it usually was a family without a dad. is that when we've had kids who were involved in gangs, it usually was a family without a dad. So fathers are incredibly important for, you know, the character of kids and, you know, I think you said it all about all the pitfalls that happen to children who do not have good, strong fathers in their lives. That's, in any case, any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment you on the work that you've done since you took over as director. I happened to have the good fortune to go to the Dad's Count Breakfast in October. And I thought it was a really great event. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And for those of you that didn't make it, Supervisor Pine told a really funny story about one of his sons, which everybody really laughed hard at, and if you haven't heard that story, when you see him, be sure to ask him about that story.
We'll get him to tell it again one day.
And so thanks.
We'll be featured in our next video.
Okay, okay.
And thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And thank you, Patrick, and as well as Supervisor Pine. You guys have done a great job with this project. There is a public speaker on this, but I'm going to hold this. I'm not going to hold it. Marty, I'm not going to have you speak on it now. I'll let you speak on it later. This is really kind of a positive, and I would rather not have those comments at this point. I'll let you speak later on the subject. I'm going to go to item number one, and they're planning a building. It's the introduction of an ordinance adopting the latest additions of the 2013 California Building Standards Code and amending the San Mateo County Ordinance Code Division, I guess, Roman numeral seven? So Chuck Clark and... Am I missing something? Oh, it's just like before Chuck, he's unfortunately taken another job in Visalia. And I was telling Chuck that he's done a marvelous job as our chief building inspector. And if you don't like in Visalia, you can come back.
I certainly will.
Okay, Chuck?
Good morning, President Horsley, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Malpey, and Mr. Byers. I'm Chuck Clark, and I'm here to propose the code adoption of 2013 state building codes. And the building codes are amended and adopted by the California Building Standards Commission every three years, and they apply to all cities and counties throughout the state. Local amendments are possible through, for example, we require three sets of plans. Other jurisdictions may require more. But if we require anything or amending anything more restrictive than the state building codes, we are required to show the state local findings with respect to climatic, topographical, and geographical conditions. And I forgot my clicker here. Also, these codes will go into effect January 1st, 2014. And I'll quickly go through the major amendments. Class B roofing materials, in the state, they allow a class C rating, which is a less fire-restrictive material. But in our local ordinance, we require class B or better, which has been in our local ordinance for a number of years. And fire sprinkler requirements also, we require them for any new structure, which has also been in our local ordinance for many years. We recently, in our last code adoption, 2013, the Fire Code and Building Code in Section 903.1, I think it is, requires fire sprinklers for any new R3, which is a single-family dwelling in the building code. And also in our local ordinance, we define new buildings, if you trip a 50% evaluation of your project, then the whole project needs to be brought up to current code, which then these would apply. And Chapter 7A of the Building Code, we're adopting or proposing to adopt this section as well, but how we are amending it is with respect to the fire severity zones the state fire marshal has with regard to SRA maps and LRA, State Responsibility Area, and the Local Responsibility Area maps, which will be proposed, proposing today for you to put in, back into our building code or local ordinance. And this is not new. This has been in our local ordinance since our last code adoption. And recommending that continue to exist, to continue existing prohibition of plastic pipe. This has also been in our local ordinance for, I think, since the late 70s. And the minor administrative amendments don't require any findings, and I'll quickly go through theirs. These are with respect to requiring a permit for a POD, which is a it's portable on-demand unit. You've probably seen these delivered in certain neighborhoods. They sit in the driveway for several weeks or months. And staff is recommending that these buildings or these units be permitted for a few reasons. If they sit in the driveway, they're taking up a required parking spot per planning. And if they're sitting on the property line and they have lumber, paint, gas, then they become a fire hazard to the neighbors and to that community. So staff is recommending that these units be permitted for a period of 90 days with one extension of 90 days, for a total of 180 days, which is in line with any building permit. We just want to make sure that we provide a safe property or safe community. And amending the terms of a permit with respect to a stop-work notice. Stop-work notices are issued to buildings or actually properties that have done work without benefit of permit. The building inspector would issue a stop-work notice to the property owner. The property owner would then come in and get a permit to legalize this work. And staff is proposing that we put a term limit on these permits that are associated with a stop-work notice of 90 days, again with a 90-day extension, and then to resolve that illegal construction. What we've seen in the past couple of years is people will come in and get a demolition permit for the illegal construction, and they never follow through. So that becomes problematic. And also, staff is proposing that we adopt the California Green Building Standards 2013. In 2008, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to develop a green building program. Since that date, the California Standards Commission has developed their own California Green Building Code, which is equal to or greater than our current green building program. So again, we're recommending that we repeal our green building program and adopt the state California Green Building Code. And my recommendation today is adopting, or adopting the latest addition of 2013 California Building Standards Codes with local amendments. Have any questions? I'm here to answer them.
Any questions? Anyone? Wait a second. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. We all received, I think, an email from Mr. Stewart last night. And I haven't had a chance to really go through it, but it talks about suggested changes. I don't know if you've had a chance, or Mr. Egomire had a chance to read Mr. Stewart's, but maybe you could just comment on his suggestions here.
I did read that this morning. I don't have that in front of me. I think the issue, one issue that he brings up is we're not requiring fire sprinkler systems within a dwelling or within a residential, which we are and has been in our local ordinance for a number of years. I'm not sure where he got that information or misinformation, but we do require fire sprinkler systems in any new home or commercial building. And the other thing was about, I think, entering a property without a warrant. To my, best of my knowledge, every time I've had to enter a property that I thought was in violation, I've always worked with county council, and we've always gotten a warrant prior to entering a property. And I believe that's going to continue as we, business as usual. So I'm not sure where he comes, where that question came from, or why would... So I couldn't really answer that other than my experience that I've had here. And also the prohibition on plastic pipe, that again has been in our local ordinance since the late 70s. And it's my understanding that we want to continue that to be as is as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Supervisor Pine?
Just I had a question about the staff memo and the green building codes. So as I understand it, of course, we've had our own code or our own set of regulations since 2008, and now the state has rules that you described as equal or better than what we have. So, you know, we'll terminate our old rules. It's a recommendation, I understand, since they're no longer really needed. And the staff memo said that the department, in connection with the county's climate action plan, will research the state's green building code, voluntary measures, Tier 1 and 2, hand screen building measures for residential and non-regional construction, and report back to your board on our findings. So what is it you're doing there? Is there any further action to be taken? I wasn't quite sure what that referenced.
Tier 1 and Tier 2 in the California Green Building Code are both voluntary. Although it says mandatory, but in Section 101.9, I believe it is, or 101.3, it's a voluntary measure. And so, and I also did some research with the local cities, and by adopting the code as it's written, we will be consistent with all of our local cities here on the peninsula. They're doing the same thing is what I'm proposing today.
And what will you be reporting back to us on? So there's these voluntary measures, whether or not we wish to comply with those, or?
Jim, match that one.
Good morning, Supervisors. Jim Egomire, Planning and Building Director. A number of months ago, the Planning and Building Department provided a, the climate action plan as relative to our efforts for unincorporated areas in that there is a work plan for a number of improvements that we'll be proposing either through regulations or through other departments to understand and bring down our greenhouse gas emissions. And so what we're looking at here is one of the opportunities within the CAP program was to explore the CalGreen building program to understand and see if the Tier 1 or Tier 2 amendments would help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we need additional information, and this is what we're working through with the CAP program to see whether or not Tier 1 and Tier 2 will help in those regards.
But those are currently, those are voluntary, right? They're described here as voluntary.
They are voluntary, and so what we're investigating is the opportunity to make either Tier 1 and/or Tier 2 become mandatory.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
But we're not at this point not able to make any conclusions yet.
I think that's worthy of, worthy of your perusal. Thank you.
Any questions? Motion?
I was just going to say I'd be happy to make a motion to introduce the ordinance adopting the latest addition of the 2013 California Building Standards Code and amending the San Mateo County Ordinance Code Division 7 Building Regulations Making the Required Findings in Attachment A and Waiver Reading of the Ordinance in Its Entirety. Or I could, if you'd like.
Second.
Real call vote?
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Grim?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Supervisor Tissier?
Aye.
President Horsley?
Aye. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say it's been my pleasure to serve this board and this community and my staff. And thank you very much for the opportunity to grow as a professional.
You're, it's going to be a big loss to the county. It's going to be hard to find somebody as, I think, as effective and competent as you, so.
Thank you very much.
Wish you best of luck in Visalia.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four is an introduction of an ordinance adopting the latest edition of the 2013 California Fire Code together with Appendix Chapters 4, B, C, D, H, K, and I, and reference standards. Chief Jolly, another person who was leaving us in a fairly short period of time. And again, you have been really fabulous to work with, not only on fire inspection, but also on a project that I've embarked on on the coast side with Princeton. So I want to thank you for your service. It's been great and fun working with you and effective working with you, so Chief Jolly.
Thank you, President Horsley, Supervisors, County Managers. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today. We are engaged in a fire code adoption process that is a parallel process with the building code. It happens every three years, and I'll go briefly over the parallel aspects of it. Every three years, the state of California adopts the building standards codes, and that includes the California Fire Code based on the International Fire Code. And those codes are published on July 1st of 2013. County of San Mateo then has 180 days to adopt those codes with any of our local amendments. And as was mentioned by, excuse me, by Mr. Clark, those are based on the local conditions that we have here in the county, topographic, geologic, or climatic in nature. Once we do our first reading and introduction here today with the Board of Supervisors, we then come back for a second reading and adopt the ordinance. And as I went through in the last, not totally every 180 days, but quite a few of those 180 days, and reviewed the new code adoption. As always, often we're a little bit ahead of the state when it comes to these things. So things that we had in our code adoption last time are rolled into the code and drop off of our local amendments. And we're always making efforts to clarify the language. If sometimes the state code is kind of hard to understand, and we'll often put something in there as an amendment that clarifies it for the citizens and the developers so that they can have a little bit better idea of what we're talking about. Anything that we can do to improve the accessibility of the code. And we'll often have, we have administrative standard details that we have available for developers and the public to let them know what they're going to need to do to finish a house and have good inspections and not run into roadblocks. And some of those we put in the code as well. Many of the local amendments this year are focused on aligning the language in the code with those clarification pieces with our neighbors. And the last couple code adoptions, we've been focusing on the neighbors that also have to come to us to the County of San Mateo for ratification later on, probably in January. Menlo Park Fire Protection District, the Coastside Fire Protection District, Belmont, and Woodside. So we've done a lot of that. One of the biggest things that we did this year is, in our fines and compliance order penalties, is we rolled into the Fire Code that ordinance that was adopted by the county in administrative fines so that we can use the same structure and the same administrative fines as the other ordinance is for code compliance, so that it's a seamless, can be a seamless process. And everybody's familiar with it, at the county level, as well as out there in the world. What we end up with, and if there's any questions on the crosswalk or any of those points brought up last night by the Association Realtors, I'd be happy to address those. But we feel that we have a very strong document that ensures that a framework for the developers and the people out there that are building these new homes and commercial properties to have a safe environment when those buildings are built, and we don't have to go back and deal with them later on and have questions about, well, why did you do, why did you let this happen? So with that, if there's any questions on the crosswalk, or if you'd like me to address any of the questions brought up last night, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions? I don't know if Chief Scott Jalbert wants to speak or no. And I see Justin Sheep is back there as well. I don't think you want to speak on this item as well, but welcome to the board meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Clayton, and enjoy your retirement. By the way, fortunately, you still live in El Granada, so you were still one of the... Fortunately, you got to stay in San Mateo County.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service. Item number five is an introduction of an ordinance to amend the County of San Mateo Ordinance Code, Title 2, Chapter 2.54, permitting and inspection fees and waiver of the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Holland, Mr. Malpey, and Mr. Byers. The Department of Public Works is bringing to you for your consideration an adjustment of the Ordinance Code that relates to public works fees for work in the right-of-way. What we found over the years in looking at our current fee structure is that some fees have been prohibitively high for people and have caused them not to seek permits for the work that we need them to do. In other cases, fees have been too low and don't recover costs for the work that we need to put into inspecting those fees. So what we're proposing before your board is an adjustment to the fee schedule. Some fees are being raised, some fees are being lowered to better reflect the effort that Public Works is putting into. that Public Works is putting into inspecting these, this work, and also to encourage people to actually get a permit and do the work legally. We've also included a penalty provision that allows us to impose a fine upon those homeowners that do work without a permit and fail to correct that action. Those penalties will only be used in cases where homeowners are uncooperative, or contractors are uncooperative, and simply will not correct the work that they've done in the right-of-way without a permit, or work that doesn't comply with our standards. We've also looked at other jurisdictions nearby. These fees are in accordance with the fees charged by other public works agencies in our surrounding area. And we feel that with this change in the fee structure, that the effort that Public Works is putting into this will actually decline a bit. That's why you see our actual expenditures decreasing, because more people will get permits and will spend less time actually trying to enforce our regulations on folks that have done work without those permits. So we're rolling this out, and we, we intend to monitor this on an annual basis, to make sure that, that what we think in concept is actually working in practice. And with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? We have one speaker on this item, Lisa Ketchum, who's the, probably the incoming chair of the MidCoast Community Council.
Good morning.
Hi, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm MidCoast Community Council member, but I'm speaking today as an individual. The MCC has not reviewed this specific fee schedule, but over the past year, the council has been advocating for improved use of the right-of-way for the community in regard to private encroachments. That's what inspired me to drive over the hill this morning, to speak in support of the staff recommendation, which states that the new encroachment fee schedule and penalties will improve the use of the right-of-way for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. President, I'm, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Porter, on that fee schedule where it's entitled to permit type, down, second from the bottom, it says street sign, street sign and post. And the way that was explained to me was, for instance, if, if a neighborhood wanted to install neighborhood watch signs, because they started a neighborhood watch program, that the installation of one sign would cost that group $546. Do I have that right?
That is correct.
And the $546, basically, as I read the memo, covers your cost and the cost of the post and the cost of the sign?
Yes, and the foundation and the installation of all.
So my question is, just get your thoughts on, in the North Fair Oaks area, for instance, there are a lot of people who have talked about creating neighborhood watch organizations and getting signs put in, and it seems like $546 for some of those folks might, you know, dissuade them from actually going forward with the program, and I'm just curious about your thoughts on that.
Sure, through the President. We charge these fees and we install these signs ourselves because of our past history with allowing individuals to attempt to install signs. We found that in the past, the work has been not quite up to our standards, and has created situations where these signs either lean, or fall down, or become a problem. So we're not looking to make money, that's simply our cost recovery for us to go out and do that work. We feel that it is important that those signs be installed, installed in a safe manner, and that they meet all requirements that we're looking for. For instance, we need the sign to be seven feet high, so when people walk down the street, they don't hit their head on it unless they play for the Warriors or something. But that's typically okay for most people. So that's why we require it, and it's simply cost recovery. So we can try to work with people on ways to have community support and fundraising for such a thing, but we really do feel that it's an important service that the department provides.
All right, thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Before I go to board members' reports, I will have Marty Fox. Did you wanna speak now, Marty?
You forgot fifteen, Mr. President.
The what?
Item fifteen.
Oh, I'll, I'm sorry, I will get it.
One moment.
It's coming, come, go ahead.
Good morning again, President Horsley, members of the board, my fellow veteran supervisor Slocum, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, and thank you for celebrating fatherhood and drawing attention to the rewards of helping the next generation address life's challenges with the support of a parent who is committed to their welfare and success, regardless of their chronological age or their brain's development. True fatherhood calls for the display of leadership characteristics like self-sacrifice and gratification deferral, like that displayed by the father who appeared before you this past February, whose son is seriously mentally ill. The father asked you for help because his son had the unfortunate experience of developing an adult onset of serious mental illness, and the father believed that he might benefit from the treatment promised by the $1.2 million Family Service Agency of San Francisco Prevention and Early Intervention Program, known as PREP. Sadly, that father and many others like him have discovered persons living with serious mental illness who do not understand their need to volunteer for treatment and to continue that treatment, will be disenrolled from PREP and other treatment programs like the so-called full-service partnerships. Please demonstrate your support for fathers of children living with adult onset of serious mental illness, like the one who appeared before you in February, by providing them access to the effective, efficient, and economical treatment that can provide them with an opportunity to experience a productive life, and vote to implement lower's law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. We will now go to item number fifteen.
Thank you.
I actually had it written up here, but I missed Redman notes.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Porter, on the, so if I have this right, in a certain area, your staff is recommending that we install light-emitting diode streetlights, LED streetlights, rather than the high-pressure sodium vapor fixtures. And I don't know that I've ever seen an LED streetlight, but I do have LED flashlights and whatnot, and they seem like they're really, really bright LEDs, just generally speaking. So I'm wondering, in that neighborhood where the proposed lights are going in, there's gonna be a mixture of, I would guess, regular streetlights, the kind we all know, and then these newer LED streetlights. And a couple of things, one, are they, are those areas where there's an excessive amount of illegal dumping, and there needs to be more light? Or is it a law enforcement issue? Or, and then finally, are we moving toward replacing all regular streetlights with LEDs? Because it seems like, in a neighborhood, you'd want, for aesthetic purposes, the same kind of streetlight, not, you know, sort of an older streetlight, and then this very bright LED streetlight right down the road from it. So if you could just cover a couple of those, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, through the President, we received a petition for streetlights in North Fair Oaks, and we're gonna install 14 streetlights in that community. We have had requests in North Fair Oaks for LED streetlights through private citizens, as well as the sheriff's office, because of the type of light it throws. It's a, it's a bright light, and it's a white light. And it does provide a good color scheme. So for instance, if it's nighttime and a blue car drives by, it looks blue. With high-pressure sodium, it throws a yellow light, and a blue car looks green.
Yeah.
And that becomes important when you're trying to, you know, identify a vehicle or a person, or what they're wearing. As I'd mentioned in North Fair Oaks, we have had requests from residents to put in LED. We have, it's out there. What the department's plan is, is to begin shifting to LED in all cases. So in residential areas, when you get a luminaire, they have what's called cutoffs. It basically keeps the light from reflecting back towards the residential properties. So when we're in residential situations, we install these cutoff-type luminaires. What we're doing on larger streets, residential, or excuse me, arterials, collectors, business-type streets, and areas where you do have illegal activity occasionally, such as dumping of mattresses and whatnot, we're trending towards these brighter lights with less cutoffs, so that you can really throw that light. In terms of this mix of lights, as we lose the high-pressure sodium, as they go out and they reach their end of useful life, we'll be moving to LED. And the technology is improving, there's, there's a softer light that's beginning to be developed, that you will start to see coming out more in commercial uses. I think you've seen for residential applications, you can buy LEDs for your house that have a more soft white light. That is trending towards the more commercial industrial use, which is basically what we're doing, is throwing up pretty big lights in residential neighborhoods. So that's the department's plan, when we do use them in residential areas, we do install those cutoffs to minimize the impact to residential neighborhoods. There will be a time when we transition, but these LEDs do come at a premium cost. You get energy savings, but the initial capital costs are pretty high. So we don't go out and just do a blanket change out of the lights. We wait until the time is right, and then come in and make that change. We do get a better rate from PG&E, but right now, the way that the return on investment works out, it's better to do it more as lights wear out than to do a blanket change out. So that's, that's the department's plan on LEDs.
Thank you for the streetlights, and thank you for that very fine answer.
Why, thank you.
Do you wish to make a motion to approve that item?
I would like to make a motion to approve that item. Thank you, Mr. President.
I will second that. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, now it's time for board members' reports. Supervisor Grim?
Thanks, President Horsley. I'd like to take a minute to give a little shout-out to Foster City, who on Saturday dedicated their Veterans Wall of Fame, and it's tucked right behind, in Leo Ryan Park, right behind the amphitheater. And it is absolutely beautiful, they had a wonderful ceremony. Every resident or employee of Foster City who served in the military is on the wall. And then they have a separate wall, if you would like to make a contribution and, and add somebody, a name in memory. And my father was a veteran, and so I'm going to put his name on, on the Foster City wall. But the ceremony and, and the whole concept, Mayor Frisella and her team just did a fabulous job.
Thank you, Supervisor Grim. Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. I just wanted to update the board on some work I've been doing in the area of sea-level rise, which I think you're all aware is of interest of mine, and two exciting things to report. First, we teamed with San Francisco Airport to apply to the California Coastal Conservancy for some funding to look at the conditions just north of the airport where San Bruno Creek and Coleman Creek enter, enter the bay. It's very, as everyone knows, a very complex area with a lot of overlapping jurisdictions. So it was a very competitive process, there were 76 applicants, but we were successful in obtaining a $200,000 grant, so we're very excited about that. And the airport, of course, has been given a lot of thought, sea-level rise, and they are at the front line of that, and they've spent a lot of money and a lot of time thinking about their property, but what's north and south of them have a great impact on them. So it was a really good kind of joint effort, and so very, very pleased with that. And then, and then secondly, in conjunction, in collaboration with Congresswoman Spear and Assemblymember Gordon, we're convening a half-day conference on December 9th to talk about sea-level rise broadly, and its particular impacts in our county, and some of the thinking that is underway, as we address a very big, in what has been called a slow-moving emergency. So you'll see that invitation today, probably, and I hope you can attend.
Congratulations on the grant. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, as my colleagues know, on November 10th, there was a fire, another fire in Redwood City down at the Sims Recycling Plant by the, near, near the Redwood City Port. And I, like all of you, I think, received quite a few emails from residents of North Fair Oaks and, and other areas who were concerned about their, their health, whether or not the water was safe, whether or not they could eat the vegetables out of their garden, and, and so forth and so on. And those, those, as I said, were many emails, and I know that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is conducting, looking into the fire. But I would ask that the county perhaps could conduct its own investigation into that fire. I understand that the Sims firm was fined some $20,000 a few years ago for a similar fire, and as I say, if you read through those emails, which I know we all did, there is a lot of concern out there in the community about the health aspects of that fire, and why they're allowed to go on, and why the fine was only $20,000. And some of that is obviously out of our control. But I would like to ask that the county look into, investigate, in whatever way might be possible, that situation on behalf of those residents who took the time to communicate with us.
Would you also like to know what was in that smoke? There was a big black plume of smoke that drifted south?
I don't know, I, I don't know if you saw the plume of smoke, but it was
I did see it.
It was very significant, and yes, I would, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Supervisor Slocum, I have, on that issue, I have had conversations with the city attorney of Redwood City, to see if we could perhaps collaborate on, on this, and see if there's anything from, from a lawyer's perspective that, that we can sort of bring to the table. So we're having those conversations.
Could I just also add that I did ask the district attorney to see if there was any violation that he might look into or impose. Supervisor Tissier?
I just, I have a question on this, actually. I didn't see the plume of smoke, because I was too far north, but
Fortunately.
I could only see the fog.
It was going south, too.
I could only see the fog, as usual. But I'm sort of curious if environmental health would be taking a look at any of this as it, as it relates to like the vegetables and things like that, it'd probably be a good thing to take a look at.
Yeah, actually, we have communicated with them, and it seems like, I hope I have this right, that they've basically deferred to the, to the air quality district on those questions, so, but it seemed appropriate, yeah, I think you're right.
I could just add on that point, I, I think that's a really appropriate request by Supervisor Slocum. I think it's really hard for the public to understand, you know, who even to talk to when something like this happens. So in addition to the environmental issue, even just a little primer from council about kind of, you know, who has authority, and, you know, if I, if you're a resident, you're saying to yourself, well, there's been two fires, you know, who's gonna make sure there's not another fire? And then, you know, these, they were fined in the past, and, you know, if, if these operations shouldn't be there, you know, who's this, who has authority for that? I mean, the public doesn't, doesn't understand who to turn to.
Mr. President, I serve on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and have spoken to the CEO about how important the study is for us.
Thank you, Supervisor Grim. Supervisor Tissier?
Okay, I, I do have a couple of things. First off, yesterday, President Horsley and I hosted a meeting of the Coalition on Safe Schools, and if you recall, that was the group that planned the Beyond Newtown School Safety Summit, and we continue to monitor the three task force. One was the comprehensive emergency management, where the sheriff's department's working with school administrators and public safety officials for an escalated school site incident that were well-coordinated and protocols are in place. We've also kicked off the youth mental health first aid and parent workshops, and that's coordinating mental health support for our schools, and as you recall, through Measure A dollars, we were able to get this off the ground. And then the last part, we're working with county council still on information sharing protocols, working on how to share information within, within the law to ensure that our students do not fall through the cracks. And the reason we continue to get together, one is to make sure we can finish these particular tasks, because these are living documents, but also, we are gonna have a breakfast in March, March 28th at Oracle again, to sort of check in with the public on our progress and, and where we are with these living documents, and continue to keep the coalitions alive, because these are not documents that are gonna sit on the shelf, these are documents that are gonna have to continue to be in effect throughout the years. So that was a very informative, very informative meeting, and we're now working on that breakfast, so I'll keep you informed on that. I also have two things I'd like to talk to the board about and the public, and one, as you know, on November 3rd, Bill Schumacher had passed away, and this Friday, at City Hall in Daly City, there will be a celebration of life. It's at 3:00 PM. So I just wanted to let all my colleagues know and the public know if they wish to attend. There'll be a lot of fun stories and engagement about Bill and his life. And the, the second thing is, many of you knew Matt Murray, who was one of his staff members here, he passed away three days later, on November 6th, at the age of 79, and he was the beloved husband of the late Shirley Murray, the loving father of Patricia, Matthew, Michael, Barbara, and Kathleen Murray, and the late Dennis Murray. He was the grandfather to Cassandra, Ryan, Matthew, Christopher, Joseph, Jeffrey, Danielle, Aaron James, Dennis James, Jaden, and Haley. He was a graduate of St. Ignatius High School, the class of 1952, and a member of the AOH Division 17 in the Moose Lodge. Division 17 in the Moose Lodge. And our sympathies go out to his family at this time.
I have, I got this, there was a public speaker, and Martin, your comments really are not pertinent to board members' reports, so I'm going to ask that you delay them until the next public, opportunity to public comment. My two, first of all, I want to add on to the Supervisor Slokom's report. I think the sheriff's office, oh yes, did a fabulous job of notifying the public. But I also like that, if you could add that, if the county manager could add that to the report about notification of the public. I think we did a great job, but we should make sure that we let the public know what was done and if there could be any improvements on that. I'd also like to add on to Matt Murray's. I actually always knew him as Frank, and I have to tell the quick story about, because he and I were policemen in the city of Daly City many years ago. And actually, he was my sergeant. And he and Bo Schumacher were both my sergeants. They were both, guys were bigger than life, both really handsome men and really fabulous police officers. But in any case, Frank, as a sergeant, we were, we were having a tremendous number of burglaries in this, in this section of Daly City. It's actually closer to San Francisco. I think the street was Frankfurt Street. And I remember the captain at the time had all of us patrol officers. We were rolling through this community. We had community meetings, and people were getting burglazed every single night on this street. And so we had these mark units going up and down the street, all over the place. And we never found anybody. And Frank was assigned to our squad at the time, they used to call him Squad or something. It was real military operation. Frank went and behind the houses, because it was all open space, and he hid in the bushes. And sure enough, the burglar came out, he caught him. And not only that, we, the kid lived, they were 17, 16-year-old kids, they lived in the neighborhood. We searched the house, we found all of the loot. He was a fabulous police officer and a good guy. In any case, goes back to my, you know, they were, they were just fabulous. In any case, the other one I wanted to adjourn in memory is Nomali Tillman. She was born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada, and received her BA in Psychology from the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. And her master's degree in social work from Rutgers University. She began her career helping individuals with serious mental illness in the community. She moved to corrections in 1992 in Alameda County. And she then came to San Mateo County in 1999 as a manager in correctional health and was promoted to become the Director of Correctional Health in 2007. She was a staunch advocate for incarcerated youth and adults during entire tenure. Correctional Health added numerous programs and services to improve the health and mental health of youths and adults in custody. And she always said she loved working at corrections because every day was different and she could make such a difference in people's lives. She, she was, will be missed by all who worked with her and for those that she advocated with as well. I had the privilege, when I was a sheriff, she was hired, and she was a human dynamo. And, you know, she really was an advocate for people who most people don't really care much about. She was an advocate for those who were really forgotten. And, you know, she was, you know, she really, you know, I hate to go into biblical things, but you know, she really believed in helping people who were, you know, incarcerated. And that's the basic principle of Christianity. So she was a great human being. She died of pancreatic cancer, survived by her husband Kent and a daughter Elizabeth. So, okay, so she was a great employee for San Mateo County. We will now adjourn into closed session. We are now back from closed session. Mr. Byers, would you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Horsley. The board met in closed session to consider two items. The board did take action on one item. Specifically, the board authorized the county council's office to file a friend of the court brief in support of the plaintiffs in the Friends of Martin Beach versus Martins Beach LLC civil matter, which involves the fundamental principle of the public's right to access to our beaches.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. The board will now, we will now adjourn.